My name is Pat Euland. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth and a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, I would like to thank the candidates for their willingness to participate in government and this general election forum for the at-large city council seats. The forum will be presented on PAC TV and linked to the League of Women Voters of Duluth website. The League posts complete, unedited recordings of these forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. You may share this forum in its entirety. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League has opened a membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. It is a volunteer organization working at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a League do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at this forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters of Duluth. And sponsorship of this forum is not a League endorsement of any of the individual candidates participating. The League of Women Voters of Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. We will sustain our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people with a mixture of abilities and backgrounds in all of our activities. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for the Duluth City Council at-large. Jordan Johnson, Asher Estrin-Hare, Derek Medved, and Therese Tominek. Our forum will begin with candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by the questioning round. Questions have been vetted by the League of Women Voters of Duluth Forum Committee and questions submitted by League members and citizens. Candidates were not given these questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide responses to the questions. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked questions in a rotating order. After the question round is complete, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement prior to the end of the forum. Candidates will now provide their prepared opening statements and will begin with candidate Johnson.
Thank you. My name is Jordan Johnson. I am grateful for the League of Women Voters and everyone who is watching this opportunity to learn more about us as candidates. I want to just emphasize I truly believe in the power of the people and kind of building a multiracial democracy. I was born and raised in Duluth. I graduated from Duluth Marshall in 1990. I ended up with a doctorate from American Studies at the University of New Mexico, which I will bring forth in my kind of efforts as a city councillor. I bring a wealth of knowledge around working in public health, around intersectionality, and understanding that community voices are critical to our decisions we make. I am a only child raised by a single mother, and that's where I gained my roots in learning how to be and struggle, live through uncertainty, and trust in the power of connection and community to create change. We were unfortunate to have lived through a housing instability and economic hardships, but through that, I gained and founded myself to become a bold, compassionate, and visionary leader. My focus is on advancing our city to be a place where everyone feels safe and that they belong, especially our future generations. Currently, I work at the American Indian Community Housing Organization as the associate director, and I have a background in our city around working in housing, particularly addressing homeless youth issues. And so for me, my priorities will include looking at economic development, fair housing, and community safety. And all those are really woven together in many ways to kind of look how we build a prosperous future moving forward. So thank you for being here, and I look forward to our conversation ahead.
All right, thank you. And second, we will hear from candidate Tominek.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity of being here today with my fellow candidates to discuss the issues and ideas that face our city. An informed electorate helps shape the progress our city makes by choosing the councillors who represent their values and hopes for the city. In the previous forum, you heard my qualifications of business owner, my work on many, many boards and commissions, my record of working collaboratively with fellow councillors and administration to make decisions that guide our city forward, and my relationships with business owners, labor, the college and university administration, constituents, labor unions, healthcare workers and administrators, and public safety workers that answer the questions and get the work done. You've seen my votes for providing resources for our libraries, for promoting funding for our parks, allocating funding for the warming shelter, the Damiano Center, and the crisis response team. And now we enter the budget season, where the council has the responsibility to set the budget. You will learn of my work with the concept of balance in mind. Balancing the needs we have to run the city, to pay our public servants, of which 85% of our budget goes for wages and benefits, to secure funding for our parks and libraries, and to make sure we fix roads and replace as many lead lines as possible every year. It is these big decisions that we hear about most, but it is the work I do on a regular basis to help individual residents that is also an integral part of my work. I take calls from concerned citizens about problems they are having in the city, and I work with city staff and other resources to help constituents get the answers they need. This is an important part of our work that I find rewarding and look forward to continuing. I have the experience, knowledge, and relationships that help our city get our work done on both the large and the small scale. Thank you.
All right. And next, candidate Medved.
Thank you. Good. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here today. I am Derek Medved, candidate for Duluth City Council at Large, lifelong Duluthian, business owner, and somebody who loves a good challenge. Of course, you know, like I like to say all the time, there are no secrets in budgeting, and that is one thing I love to bring to the table, is somebody who balances a large budget, and we can bring a lot of things forward when we're discussing the challenges at hand. One thing we're hearing on the doors is taxes, and of course, all the details tie back to the city budget. And in my opinion, that is one of the largest things the council does, and so I look forward to bringing that expertise forward and discussing things further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And candidate Estrin-Hare.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me here today. I am a Duluth homeowner and business owner. I manage to be both of those things due to a rare set of circumstances and the right place at the right time. That lets me operate from a place of privilege, and I recognize that. Unlike the current administration, I recognize my privilege, and I want it for everyone. I chose to run because the overwhelming majority of council members ignore that privilege. The power players in politics are corporations, developers, and deep pockets. Campaigns are funded by special interests and utilities, and that practice silences the marginalized who are ignored, pushed aside, and continuously legislated against. Our city budget currently has a $7 million shortfall, which is actually money that is missing. The city finance director resigned, and we have no concrete answers, no matter how many times we ask, as to how that money was misappropriated, and questions from the public have been ignored. The only action taken is to remove transparency by deleting a vital council email address, blocking out media and the general public. In spite of this shortfall, the city decided to work for tax cuts for Cirrus and continued tax incentives for Incecha, who in turn must make record profits and offer nothing to the public, and the public is destined to make up the difference. I'm running not necessarily to win, but to show the public that they deserve better, and together we can demand better. Thank you.
Great, thank you, candidates. We will now move to the questions that are prepared by the forum committee. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond, and we'll begin with candidate Medved. And your first question, "How can our Skywalk system be revitalized and made safe for pedestrian traffic?"
Good question. And of course, there's a lot of layers that go into it. Of course, we can talk about easements, we can talk about, you know, getting down to the details of, you know, housing in downtown. You know, we talk about it as, you know, an idea, a revitalization of downtown, and if we have that mix of housing, you know, there will be different approach to access and Skywalks. But I believe focusing on the DPD, encouraging, you know, additional patrol downtown, but also partnering with business owners and stakeholders in the community to find solutions, whether it's with homeless, whether it's with mental health concerns, we need to make sure we're focusing on those details first and foremost.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And second will be candidate Estrin-Hare. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
"How can our Skywalk system be revitalized and made safe for pedestrian traffic?"
I don't know that more patrols is necessarily the answer, but the Skywalk businesses need to be revitalized. A lot of them have gone out of business. There's not enough promotion to get people up there, and downtown is literally just dying right now. Taking away the benches in the Skywalk does nothing but make people have to walk farther. I've sat down in the Skywalk and been told I have to move on, and that makes no sense to me. Sitting is a crime, apparently now, but to have businesses move into the Skywalk, have downtown more pedestrian-friendly, putting in a pedestrian mall, for instance, would be better. Changing the dynamic of downtown to be something other than what's basically a wasteland, and finding vital services for those who find themselves living down there in doorways and alleys. With those vital services, people are less desperate, and crime goes down when people are given what they need rather than finding desperation and resorting to crime.
All right. Candidate Tominek.
Thank you. We have had a concerted effort to see how we can revitalize the Skywalk. In Duluth, we have the unique combination of having a lot of pedestrian sidewalk and the skyway system. So downtown Duluth is leading the Imagine Duluth to find out how we can better serve both areas. The study will find out what sections of the skyway we can keep open and what hours we can keep it open. It's very important that people have access to the deck because people go to the symphony, they go to the ballet, our cultural center is down there, and there are a lot of conventions that use that skyway system. So the other thing is, the police department is seeing if they can have more community safety officers. These are people who are uniformed, but they are not police officers, and they are patrolling the Skywalk, making relationships, and helping people find out where they can go as well as get services. The Clean and Safety Team provides a person in the Skywalk to help people, again, who need resources and direction on where they can find that. We have to support our skyway as much as we can because it brings together business, safety, downtown Duluth, and cultural events. Thank you.
All right. And candidate Johnson.
Yeah, thank you for the question. The Skywalk has looked very different over the course of many years, and it's going to take time before we can actually really rethink and reimagine what the Skywalk will look like. It's an aging Skywalk, there's a lot of empty spaces, a lot of businesses that have moved. And so for me, like, I think one of the pieces is, and there's a perception of unsafety that we keep reinforcing and reemphasizing. There is efforts to kind of move our supportive services, such as CHAM and Union Gospel, into kind of a service district area in the downtown area, which helps cultivate the support mechanisms for people who might need those services. When we have a Skywalk system that we can maybe think about, how do we create a very artistic space, a very much more kind of fitness-based? People want to walk through there, elders potentially want to move through there. If we're going to have residential sites more in the downtown area and units in the downtown area, how can we reimagine that space? Not as a Skywalk, but as a space where there's community that's developed, where there's people that are engaged with one another, and that when we have that kind of emphasis and kind of focus, we start to shift a perception of what safety means because we are all watching out for one another along the way. So I think there's a long haul ahead in regards to what the Skywalks look like because structurally and architecturally, we also have to think through what that means for us in the city. So I appreciate the question and look forward to a continued conversation.
Great, thank you. Next question, we will be starting with candidate Tominek. And the question is, "What needs to change in the downtown Superior Street area to make it more welcoming and fully utilized?"
Thank you for that question. You know, this is a study that we're conducting now to find out what people really need and want. We have the Power Up the Plaza that has been a real asset to the community where people can meet and have coffee on a Wednesday morning and entertainment. Those kinds of things are what vitalize our downtown. There are restaurants that are coming back into the downtown area, which is really important so that people are there in the evening. But probably the most important is housing. We've seen the recent opening on Fourth, on Fifth, that provides housing for people who are coming into Duluth but can't find a house to buy yet. We know that housing is one of our critical issues, along with childcare. But those opportunities to live and work and entertain and eat downtown are going to be very important for how we can revitalize downtown. We're grateful for the small businesses, such as Huckleberry, who continue to serve people downtown and offer an enlightening and funny area where people can shop and stroll the streets. We need to make it safer, that perception of safety that candidate Johnson talked about, that's really important. And as we see people more freely walking around downtown, people will see that it's safe to be downtown and want to be there.
All right, thank you. Candidate Johnson, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
"What needs to change in the downtown Superior Street area to make it more welcoming and fully utilized?"
So that's a very specific question around Superior Street. And so I'm one who lives downtown, I live on First Street. And so what I think is really important to think around is how do we cultivate and support our local businesses and opportunities for local businesses? That's a space where we can kind of think through how do we build future entrepreneurs, maybe kind of think through how do we get more of our streets to become safe or bike ability, walkability. The also thing I think about is Superior Street could be a connector to Canal Park, Lincoln Park, out towards Zeitgeist and the arts. And so how can that street and that area become like a main contender and build a comprehensive plan for our city as opposed to silo districts? And so one of the things I would like to think through, I think through the Imagine Downtown Duluth effort and the plan that's forthcoming, and the residential kind of vision that seems to be putting forth, is how do we build this kind of also sense of community and culture of care on that street that kind of builds in a robust economic housing opportunity that is a comprehensive connector throughout our city? So thank you.
All right, thank you. Candidate Estrin-Hare.
Downtown could use a lot of different changes, one of which would be pedestrian mall. A pedestrian mall could take up four, five, six city blocks. The back and forth, some people don't ride bikes, some people worry that they don't have a car to park close to the business they need to go to. We could put an electric trolley in there funded by Minnesota Power. Minnesota Power has a history of funding council candidates, so they must have an interest in the city itself, so I'm sure they would be glad to pick up that slack. Inviting other businesses to go downtown, to work downtown, to start up downtown, a lot of buildings are empty, and the rents are not coming down, they're staying and even going higher. I couldn't afford to put my business downtown, and I put it in Lakeside, and I found a very easy landlord to work with that gave me quite a break. The tax incentives that Incecha gets and Cirrus gets, they could instead be given to startup businesses that could help them be more successful. But there's a lot, it's going to start with building businesses and getting people to want to go downtown, and you've got to give them something to do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next question, we will be starting with candidate Estrin-Hare, and the question is, "Lakeshore erosion." Oh, I am so sorry.
You are good.
I'm in too much of a hurry.
No worries.
All right, candidate Medved, thank you. Thank you for correcting me on that. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I'm good.
All right.
No, so thank you for the question. One thing that I always believe is history does repeat itself, and of course, we should look back to understand how things were done before and how downtown integrated and evolved. And one thing my grandma and my mom talked about a lot was glass block, and you know, all those good memories of going to the department stores, whether they had food, facilities. But overall, I truly believe that is the vision we need to look back on and understand that is the vision we should move forward with. And I think there was even an architect who put out on Facebook and it went viral that we need to somehow integrate the freeway back into downtown. Is that an option? Very expensive one, but also I truly believe that we need to focus on transportation. That has changed a lot. We need to focus on big box retail, even though that's changed a lot. We have Amazon, and people are not necessarily shopping with big box retail. But parking, safety, and integration with housing. But I truly believe we need to stick to the basics and go back to what history used to be, and that's bringing retail back downtown and really focusing, taking the focus from Germantown back to the heart of Duluth. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, question three, and candidate Estrin-Hare, you will start. "The lakeshore erosion is a continuing concern. We've shored up the Lake Walk and Brighton Beach and the pier by the deck in the last few years. What more needs to be done?"
For lakeshore erosion? That is a good question. The work done at the Lake Walk is really important, and I know Brighton Beach took a long time to finish, and the pier is bringing cruise traffic in, but there's been a lot of talk about hardscaping a lot of things to keep the erosion to a minimum. But what hardscaping does is make it less inviting for people to use those beaches and shorefronts. I think a better option is with plants and natural remedies. You can bring sand back, you can bring a lot of things back, but putting the rocks and the cement and everything out there gives you a place to walk, but it doesn't give you a place to really enjoy the lake. I think there needs to be someone other than the council necessarily to appoint a board of, like, DNR to come and see what's best for the lake, what's best for the fish, what's best for the wildlife, and what's best for people. And I think that putting those heads together would create a much easier solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Medved.
Thank you. So of course, ongoing maintenance, we can't lose sight of that. We always got to continue to remain focused on the infrastructure that we have there. Is it failing? Does it need ongoing maintenance? Also, beach nourishment, that needs to be a continuous, ongoing thing. That is not as easy as it sounds. The group on Park Point was very good in organizing and having the details organized to have, you know, publics, public individuals come in and have discussions on it, but also there was issues with beach nourishment, and there was debris and others, other issues that were in the sand that might have been dangerous, whether it was shrapnel from pop cans or whatnot. But federal partnerships and state partnerships and bringing in those officials to understand how do we continue and keep up on it, because it is an ongoing issue and it requires ongoing maintenance and support. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Candidate Johnson.
Yeah, I thank you for the question, and I have to just fully disclose, I would, I don't know the full answer to that question. And I would, what I would do is pull together and work in partnership with environmental stewards, engineers, and people who have a better knowledge base than I do around what causes that erosion. That would be my question initially. What's creating the erosion to happen on our shores? And so, and for me, the immediate thought comes to climate change and climate resiliency and how we have to think through those aspects of, what's the health of our lake? What's the health of the water? As someone who swims in Park, in the Big Lake, off of Park Point primarily, I want to continue swimming in the lake, and I would prefer not to have the erosion continue to kind of bump up against our areas such as Lake Walk or the Deck and Brighton Beach. So for me, it would be pulling together a critical crew of people to have conversations, educate myself, analyze the situation, and ask critical questions moving forward. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And candidate Tominek.
Thank you. You know, we think of the Lake Walk as one long continuum, but we can break it up into different sections and decide what needs to be done in those areas. The huge storm, we've had two storms of the century that wreaked havoc on the Lake Walk, but we received FEMA money to help repair that, and the city Parks and Rec has been diligent in replacing that so we can continue to use that. A second section is behind the Deck, and ensuring all of that up, that was incredibly necessary. We created a large expansion of a gathering space where we can have concerts and people gathering, and we also can bring in cruise ships to park closer, so that adds to our economy. If people are able to disembark easily, they can go into our city and enjoy the cultural events and spend their money. There's an area down by the Marine Museum that because of the change in the flow of the lake really need to be shored up, and if you go down there now, that's federal money, that's torn up. It's harder to get out on the pier, but you can go around, but they're putting in large boulders and concrete barricades to protect that area. Park Point, there's a very active and knowledgeable group that's working down there. They held a three-day seminar in spring, and I was down at that. We heard about DNR enrichment because we need to keep replacing that. It is a sandbar that's prone to erosion. And then we have individual homes, and those groups can join together and pool their money so that they can afford to offer some buffer from the lake, and so I've seen residents doing that. How are we going to pool our money and protect our area? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, our next question is, we'll start with candidate Johnson. "Large-scale developments have fallen through at the Central High School site and at the Lester Golf Course. What projects should the city be actively seeking for these and other areas?"
That's a great question, and it would, and I know there has been community input to some extent on those two sites, and there are some plans in place around Lester Park that are in conversation. And so what I would do is kind of analyze and look at what those pieces are. And those large development projects clearly have sent a message that they're not working. And so how do we start to really look at who's investing? Who are the investors behind those projects? Who are the investors we want to bring into those projects? And then what are the developers and the people we want to work for, work with, and the workforce we want to support, and the unions we want to support to kind of ensure that whatever we design and create together is moving forward? I highly emphasize the focus around having green space available, ensuring that we are being good stewards of the land and what that entails. We absolutely need housing, I understand that, and multi-tier housing can be an option, but then how do we, and through housing, we then generate economic revenue and development in our city. And so I would like to kind of consider, I don't have the answer, but I'm willing to consider what is the, makes the most sense and will be the most productive in the long haul? I'm talking not 10 years, I'm talking 50 years down the road because our future generations are going to be the ones who are going to inherit those sites. So, thank you for the question and look forward to more conversations about those spaces.
All right, thank you. Okay, candidate Tominek.
Oh, thank you. Let me start with Central High School. I want to make clear that the city council had approved TIF for that project, but not a penny of city money was spent when that project was put on hold, and that was a matter of funding that the developer could not get the funding that he needed. Interest rates have been very high, making it hard for developers to build and not have to charge such exorbitant rates that people can't live there. Interest rates are now coming down, so we're hopeful we'll see more development. We need careful development up there because we need to preserve harbor highlands and the neighbors, and as we know, it's, it is somewhat interesting to get up there on the roads that are existing. In Lester, the city will be addressing that. There again, it is somewhat difficult to build on because of the utilities and because of the bedrock that's in that area. But there are groups that are working to find out how we can build a wide variety of housing in that area. Whether or not we continue to have golf, we have to be careful that we put a lot of money into the Anger Golf Course, and we don't want to take away from people supporting Anger. The housing, pardon me, we want to have high-end housing, we want to have affordable housing, we want to have market-rate housing, and we want to have senior housing because the Maxfield Study that was just presented- Maxfield study that was just presented recently has shown that that's our largest group of people that are growing in Duluth, and we need to provide suitable housing for seniors so that they can move from their housing and free up houses for families. Thank you.
All right. Candidate Medved.
Could you re-ask the question?
Absolutely. "Large-scale developments have fallen through at the Central High School site and at the Lester Golf Course. What projects should the city be actively seeking for these and other areas?"
Thank you. You know, I will not say just any project, you know, we should be open for business. We should have the welcome mat at the front door saying, you know, we are open to creative ideas, we are open to anything and everything. And I always like to use Counselor Kennedy's quote, "And we're open for business," and she said that a lot about the western part of town. And you see that we have a lot of green space, we have a lot of available areas for development. Morgan Park was an industry town. Just out my office window in Gary, we have a private developer that just developed a 20-unit without any TIF, without any city help other than permitting, but now they will be erecting another 16-unit. And so that's, in my opinion, the kind of growth I would like to see, of course, at a faster rate, but any and all projects, whether it's large high-rises to single-family homes on infill lots, which again, DITA did as a pilot program, I'll call it, I think we can call it that, but where they allowed infill lots to be bid on for developers to kind of have that open idea of housing, or whether it was tiny homes or single-family homes. But creativity, that's what I'm looking for and would love to see in the city, creativity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, candidate Estrin here.
Yes, well, it's true that the Incline Village, the TIF money that was given, none of that was actually spent, so it didn't cost any of the citizens anything. What did cost the citizens and the city is the grading and demolition and everything that happened up there. We're not getting that back. There is a home builder in Minnesota, the largest home builder in Minnesota, who has shown interest in wanting to build at Incline Village, Central High School, and at Lester. They're willing to build a variety of homes, luxury homes, mid-priced homes, affordable homes, senior homes, all of it. All they want is efficient permitting and timely inspections, neither of which we have. I had some, I had pulled some permits for something in my house back in 2020, it still has not been taken care of. With a larger, with, if all those homes were built, we would have a larger property tax base, and we wouldn't be in the funding crisis that we're in now. So, all the city really has to do is just respond to that home builder. I know they contacted them back in January and have heard nothing still. Thank you.
All right. And our last question, we'll start with candidate Medved, and it's a long question, so if you need it repeated, please ask. "The Community Crisis Response is a team of mental health professionals specializing in de-escalation, intervention, and stabilization of mental health crisis situations. It has been funded through allocations transferred from the law enforcement budget in order to redirect crisis calls to more appropriate professionals. How would you work with your fellow council members to ensure that funding for this critical service with a proven success record is included in the new budget to ensure that all types of incidents are handled by the professionals best trained for the situation at hand?"
Thank you, and I love that question. Mental health is very near and dear to my heart. On my previous time on council, that was one thing that I was an author on, working on the details, trying to move it forward, and of course, we were very successful in moving that forward with funds from the COVID funding. Unfortunately, we had the discussion just previously with council that the funding was going to dry up and that we needed to find an alternative source for funding, and the county, I believe, has committed and is still committed to moving that forward. But also, I would love to see Duluth play a partnership in moving that forward and being part of that funding or solution moving forward, because not just we need to keep it at the rate it's at, but continue growing it, because there is a lot of mental health needs in our community and something I would love to support and work on if re-elected. So, again, I believe that is a very, very important, you know, item that we have in our toolbox. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Candidate Estrin here.
The community resource officers are extremely important with the police force in the city. Mental health is often a problem, and a lot of times people will have interactions with individuals that make them nervous. I frequently talk to all sorts of people on the street. I don't necessarily have a problem with them, but I've worked closely with a couple of community resource officers with people in my business neighborhood and in my neighborhood in order to de-escalate situations, in order to help find resources for people that need it, because a lot of times the regular police are just not trained for anything other than force, and that's a very necessary part of the police budget is to have those community resource officers, more so than, say, an armored car or overtime at the library. We do need resource officers at the library as well, but that should be a regular position and not something that the library has to use their budget to pay overtime wages for. I think there's a much easier way to have everything worked out to where it works for everyone and not just a few. Thank you.
All right. Candidate Johnson.
Can you repeat the question?
I can. The "Community Crisis Response is a team of mental health professionals specializing in de-escalation, intervention, and stabilization of mental health crisis situations. It has been funded through allocations transferred from the law enforcement budget in order to redirect crisis calls to more appropriate professionals. How would you work with your fellow council members to ensure that funding for this critical service with a proven success record is included in the new budget to ensure that all types of incidents are handled by professionals best trained for the situation at hand?"
So, I just want to emphasize, I really believe in working in collaboration with my city council members, particularly around difficult issues that we might not necessarily all agree on how to approach. But given the situation and the multitude of aspects, these are actually probably co-occurring issues. Mental health, drug addiction go hand in hand in many regards. This crisis response team is an evidence-based, proven kind of method to work, and how do we also then reduce the stress and mental health matters and the trauma our other frontline workers are facing? So, our fire department often responds to calls, our, you know, other enforcement officers respond to calls, and so we have a robust amount of people in this town who know how to handle and navigate mental health issues. I've worked with people who have struggled with mental health issues, particularly our young people, and sometimes they just want you to listen to them. They need to get whatever's off their chest on, and have somebody just vent that and take it out on, and that might be you, and that has been me before. And that's what they need at that time, and then it helps to move and kind of figure out the next steps to handle what the reality of the situation is they're facing. So, I would really fight for and advocate to have a crisis response team funded, because that's a critical part to the global issues that we are, or the local issues we are facing kind of in the downtown area to some extent and throughout our community. So, I would, but I would work in partnership with our city councilors, whoever they might be, and that's how I would move in addressing that issue. So, thank you.
All right. And candidate Tominek.
Thank you. The crisis response team is an important part of the safety of our residents and the people who are being challenged that are not necessarily housed. The community wants the crisis response team, the council wants it, the administration wants it, and we will work to fund it. I have been reassured by the mayor that the CRT is included in the upcoming budget. The council has the final approval of the budget. If we need to find other sources or feel that we need to increase that, we will deal with that at the time. The safety officers, we talked before about the community safety officers who are out on the street helping people and as the clean and safe team also. I want to say that our police officers are so well-trained in de-escalation. The council authorized $200,000 in increased training funding so that our officers are trained in a multitude of ways to handle a situation. So, if there's any indication of violence that could happen, then the police officers are called. The training program that we have in Duluth is a model for training programs across the country. So, again, we all want to make sure that that will be in place, and it will be in place, and as I have said, I've been reassured that it's in the upcoming budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will ask candidates to give a two-minute closing statement, and we will hear first from candidate Estrin here.
Duluth isn't unique. The status quo happens in a lot of cities. Those in power often create and exacerbate problems, then they maintain that they're the only ones who can solve them. Then they continue to not solve them, and that keeps them in power. By pointing out a scapegoat, the marginalized don't look up to see the problem, they look down to blame others victimized by that practice. For instance, if Essentia paid their fair share of taxes and paid their nurses properly, shareholders wouldn't benefit, which begs the question why a city councillor is on the board of Essentia and refuses to advocate on behalf of citizens. But that money could provide something that benefits the citizens, like universal childcare. Studies have shown that every dollar put into universal childcare brings back at least $3 to the economy, because single parents can go back to work, they can use that money to shop at businesses, they can staff those businesses. Everything goes back into the economy. There's also the sports complex that's going in in Proctor. I know that was offered to the city of Duluth first with plans to put it in West Duluth, they just wanted land to put it on. They were turned down, so now Proctor's getting that. So, that's going to kill that side of town. We have all the tools at our disposal, what we don't have is a city administration with the ability to do anything other than pass the disasters they create onto the citizens who have to, who have to pony up the dough for it. They pledged to serve us and they abandoned us. Thank you.
All right. Candidate Medved, your closing statement, please.
Thank you to everybody who is listening today. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. A very exciting time. You know, last time I ran, we talked and said it was a time for choosing, and I believe the same thing, it is a time for choosing. For me, I love my day job, right? I love the budgeting aspect of it, and I look forward to bringing that to council, because I believe that is one of the most important jobs that council can and does do, is focusing on the budget. We talk about infrastructure, we talk about public safety, we talk about mental health. Those are all things tied to the budget, and of course, thoughtful budgeting will tie and fund those items. And so when we talk about city administration, we talk about council, we want people and administration and leadership that continues hope, because that's what we got to give back to the public. We got to give them hope that we're working on the difficult topics and we're moving forward. Hard work, we got to bring that to the table and make sure we're doing the darnedest job we can, to focus on the details and move the city forward, but also creativity. Now is a time to be creative. We talk about many different things, from the school board to the city, and finding ways to partner and save the taxpayer money. And so I look forward to bringing that creativity, the hard work, and the hope to council, and I look forward to serving you guys if re-elected. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Tominek.
Thank you. Again, I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum and helping inform those watching of the candidates' experience, views, and vision for the city. In addition, it's important to remember that your representative on council needs to listen and synthesize what constituents' needs and values are, rather than viewing their work strictly from their own lens. On each issue, each resolution, and ordinance proposed, we as councillors must do our homework, talk with city staff, seek out and listen to our constituents, and access other resources as needed. The work is ongoing, and it requires determination, strength, and commitment. The meetings get long, and so does the time, the work to prepare for them. Having been a lifelong learner, returning from my master's at age 58, I relish the opportunity to learn more about the best ways to help our city grow and prosper. Being an outgoing person, I take every opportunity to meet with folks and hear their concerns. Being a pragmatist, a pragmatist with a heart, as I've been called, I look for ways to care for our people, not just our finances. These are the ways I have dedicated myself to the work of council for the past five years, and with your vote and your help, I promise that I will commit to that for the next four years. Thank you.
All right. And candidate Johnson, your closing statement.
Yeah, so a thank you also to PAC TV for having us and for the League of Women Voters and that partnership, kind of this is a fruitful example of what we can make happen in our city. And so I just want to also just emphasize that I am somebody who has dedicated my life to speaking up and speaking alongside, and standing alongside our community members for what is right. We have a long road ahead of us. There's a lot of budget deficits, there's a lot of budget shortfalls that we are facing, and I will work diligently to ensure to the best of my ability that those deficits do not fall on our working families, our people with fixed incomes, and we can creatively come up with solutions to move forward, to create a prosperous, vibrant city for generations to come. I also believe we need to kind of focus on where we spend our time and our energy, and you've heard that we've lost time and energy in different projects. And so I would love to see and plan to move in a way that we are clear about our projects, we're investing in our city, and that's where my emphasis will be. I believe in working alongside community members and with organizations, with business leaders from the various business districts, and kind of developing a comprehensive plan throughout our city, where we are not siloed, but we are coming together to kind of lift up who Duluth is and who do we want to become. The question I ask you is, what is the legacy we want to leave for generations to come? That's a critical question that runs in my mind over and over. We are at a different time than we were 50 years ago, and so for me, what's our vision ahead for the next 100 years for Duluth, and how can I be a part of that alongside you? So, thank you and ask for your support.
All right. This concludes the candidate forum for Duluth City Council at Large seats. It is our purpose in sponsoring events such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time setting. If your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact the candidates directly. We hope this helps you learn more about the candidates and the issues so that you can make informed choices at the polls on Tuesday, November 4th. We thank the candidates, PAC TV, and the viewers of this forum. PAC TV will broadcast this forum and others. Check their listings for the schedule of times. The forums will also be posted on the League of Women Voters of Duluth website, L W V Duluth dot org. Again, L W V Duluth dot org. Thank you.